I would also like to welcome Western Hills Access Television and its viewers. Please note that any video and/or audio content recorded by the Western Hills Access Television is private content and not subject to Maine's Freedom of Access Law.
Excuse me?
For those of you who are-
I debate that.
I'm sorry?
I debate that.
Later. For those of you who are attending the hearing in person and have not already done so, please sign in. I think everybody has signed in.
Yeah, the clipboard's out there somewhere.
Yes.
Could you sign it, Brooks?
Yeah, I left it for Brooks right here on the- on the chair.
I will recognize speakers in the following order. The applicant or their agent will introduce and provide a brief presentation of the proposed subdivision. Questions through the chairperson to the applicant by members of the board. Questions and/or requests for more detailed information on the evidence presented by the applicant through the chairperson to any abutter or others directly affected by the proposed subdivision. Presentation by any abutters or others who will be directly affected by the proposed subdivision. Questions by the applicant and/or board members through the chairperson to the abutter or others who have just made their presentation. Rebuttal statements by any person who justified previously. Finally, comments or questions by others interested people in the attendance, which I don't know if we have any. Please keep your questions and/or presentations short and concise. Be considerate of others waiting their turn to speak and of the board members who have to diligently listen to each and every one of you. As the chair, I reserve the right to expedite or terminate a presentation. As stated earlier, any member of the public is welcome to address the board. Our, the board's deliberations to approve, approve with condition, or deny the application may only consider testimony that provides evidence related to the performance standards or criteria of approval detailed in the town's ordinances. Are there any questions from the public? Before I proceed, I would like to verify from the applicant or their representative that all abutters have been notified. Have they been notified? And the hearing has been properly advertised. I believe it was advertised twice in the local papers and it was posted on the town office and the Newry Post Office. Are there any abutters in attendance tonight? Charlie, let the record show that we have one abutter in attendance. At this point, I will turn it over to the applicant to make their presentation.
Please address the public. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rick Dunton with Mainland Villages Consultants, representing Timberline TH LLC, principals of whom are Brian Monroe, Kevin Monroe, and John Marata. John's here tonight. The map and lot number was mentioned. You know it as the Phoenix House Restaurant, but again, since we just came from a site walk and there's only one abutter to address, I'll address you. We've been there. We know where the site is. We've had a chance to see the, how it fits in the land in relation to what shows on the plan. The north, north of this, this plan is up the page. The mountain is back to the bottom of the page to the south of the development. There's no natural resources on the site and it's been highly developed for some time now. The, the project's bounded by, by an access drive to parking lot three for Sunday River, which is right here, by the skiway road, which is down the bottom of the plan, and by Timberline Road, which is to the right of the plan. The applicant's proposing residential condominium project of three buildings totaling 11 units, 22 parking spaces outside plus garage space. Garages are on the lower level and accessible from the front. And then there's living space access at grade to the back, so that's the, to the next floor up. The buildings are placed to face the mountain and have a view of the, of the slopes, which is obviously desirable. And landscaping is proposed, as we pointed out on the site walk. And we're, we're taking a bunch of paved areas, going back into grass and, and landscape, cleaning that area up substantially. And there's also a stormwater management ponds in the middle, middle in front of the site. And we pointed that out on our walk as well. The last thing I'll, I'll note is that there is a planned privacy fence for the, for separation between the units and the neighborhood behind to the north. And I think that's probably where, I'll leave it as the highlights.
How many parking spaces, you said?
It means 20, 22 plus garage.
22 plus?
Plus garage space.
The what space?
Garage.
Garage, okay, plus, but it doesn't count towards...
I mean, it's, it's off-street parking, but-
Yeah, yeah, but I bet I don't think, I don't think garage space counts towards the parking space allotment requirement.
Why wouldn't it?
Is it inside the building? I don't know. But does that include the reserved parking?
That does not include the reserved parking. Okay, yeah, okay. This is reserved for the applicant and TH LLC, and then that's reserved for the previous owner.
Gooch, you have any questions for the, on the applicant's presentation?
I wasn't aware that this little parking lot down there was reserved for the applicant.
And I think it's all stated on the, on the drawing. Any other questions, Gooch?
Nope.
Bruce, you have any questions for the, concerning the presentation?
No, I guess not.
We're not deliberating. This is just on the presentation. Clarifying anything that was said by, by Rick.
No, I, you know, I asked my questions on the site.
Charlie, you have any questions for the, or anything that you need to explain from the presentation made by the applicant?
John, where are the wells of them? Are they digging three wells or two wells? Where are they?
Yeah, there's, there's an existing well proposed between buildings two and three. And I think it shows on a different plan, but I think the land's, land's right in here. The systems that we saw while we were on site was, were right here on the knoll. Those are going away. And then two, two new potential wells here on the far side based on demand from the-
Excuse me a minute. Charlie, would you in a loud, clear voice for the recorder state your name?
Charles Little.
And you are?
Something Viking Village.
Viking Village, so you are, you are an abutter. Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
All right. Mr. Little, do you want to make a statement for the board?
Well, I was here because of concern of some of the Viking Village residents about the potential for an impact on our water supply. And also, I guess maybe as a warning to them that there has been some water problems in that area. We had a 600 volt well that went from 30 gallons a minute to about 15 within the last year. And I didn't realize they were going to go away with their systems, but they, we are very thankful we have assistance.
You don't have any evidence to, to-
No, I don't really have any.
To pass to the board?
Okay.
Mr. Roberts, does, Sunday River have any comments that they'd like to make at the public hearing?
No comments.
I think comments of support. He's worried. He couldn't squeeze it out.
Okay. Last chance for, all right. Hearing no other further interest in the public hearing, I will call the public hearing adjourned.
6:15 PM.
6:15 PM. And let us change hats here. Yeah, you, you and I both. You ready? Good evening. This is- Good evening. This is the May 7th, 2025 meeting of the Town of Newry Main Planning Board. This meeting will come to order. My name is Ted Baker. I am the chair-
6:17.
Okay. I'll get to that. I am the chairperson of the board. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the board that normally starts at 6 o'clock. However, due to the public hearing that just concluded, we are starting approximately 17 minutes later than usual. This is a public proceeding, and you, the public, have the right to hear everything that is being said unless the board votes to enter into executive session for Maine's Freedom of Access Law. You have the right to review any of the materials created or received by the board that relate to the board's deliberation unless state law makes that document confidential. Please notify the board if you are unable to hear or would like to access any material. Tonight's meeting is being audio recorded by the recording secretary. If you'd like any, if you'd like or need access to this or previous meeting audio recordings, please see the town administrators. I would also like to welcome Western Hill Access Television and its viewers. Please note that the content televised and/or recorded by Western Hill Access Television is private content and not subject to Maine's Freedom of Access Law. If you have not signed in and you are physically present, please sign in. I think everybody has signed in. This is a working session of the planning board. Maine's Freedom of Access Law entitles the public to- Make, attend the meeting, take notes of the meeting, and make an audiovisual recording of the meeting. The board's policy is not to allow public comment during the meeting. However, as chairperson, I may allow exceptions when it is in the interest of the board. An example of an exception would be to allow an abutter to address the board. By Newry's planning board bylaws, this meeting may not last for more than two and a half hours. Due to the delayed start, this meeting will adjourn no later than 8:45. The meeting may be extended by 30-minute increments. If a motion to extend with a pro vote is made for each 30-minute increment, if the meeting is not extended by any remaining agenda items or discussions will be tabled at that time. Tonight's agenda includes the following business. Correspondence received. Timberline TH LLC, application for a subdivision on Timberline Road, application number 25-286. Sunday River Skiway Incorporated, application for a site plan review on a proposed Cascade Booster Pump House. Prior to attending to the above business, the board must first conduct some administrative procedures, the force of which is attendance. For section 2.B. of the Newry Planning Board ordinance amended June 8, 2021, the board is made up of three voting members and two alternate members. In order for the meeting to proceed, I must first establish that a quorum is present. A quorum consists of two voting members. The members of the board are myself, Bruce Pierce, vice chair, John, Gooch, Glauthier, secretary. All three of us are present, and therefore, let the record show that we have a quorum. Also, let the record show that the two alternates, Meredith Herrup and Rob Cates, are absent tonight. Next is voting eligibility. A voting member that was absent for the previous meeting is not eligible to vote on old business unless they have completed an affidavit stating that they have reviewed the material for the missed meeting, read the draft minutes, and have listened to the audio recording of the minute, of the meeting. All three members of the board were present at the last meeting, and so we are all eligible to vote. Let the record show that. Next is the minutes of the prior meeting. Excuse me. Minutes of the public hearing held on 4/16/25. Does any board member have any comments or edits on the minutes drafted for the public hearing held on 4/16/2025? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the public hearing on-
I'll second that.
4/16.
4/16.
Has been, a motion has been made with a proper second to approve the minutes for the public hearing held on 4/16/2025. Any comments? I'll take a vote.
One, two, three.
Let the record show that the minutes as drafted for the public hearing held on 4/16/25 were approved. Next, we'll have the planning board working session held on 4/16/2025. Are there any comments or edits to be made on those minutes?
Nope.
Yep. Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes of the planning board working session held on 4/16/2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 16, 2025 meeting.
I'll second that motion.
The motion with a proper second to approve as drafted, the planning board working session meeting is held on 4/16/2025 has been made. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
One.
Two. Three. I'll take a vote.
I'm sorry about that.
Mr. Rock, we have a- We have to complete the Timberline application tonight. I'm not sure it's going to take two and a half hours, but it could. You can patiently sit there and wait and hope that you come up, or I will receive your application today. We'll start the 30-day clock for the planning board to find it complete, and you will be first on the agenda. Oh, assuming that Timberline gets resolved tonight, you'll be first on the agenda at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think if there's a, you know, assumption that the Timberline application will be resolved, I'll just just then go home and come start fresh at the next meeting, if that's okay with the board.
That's fine. So, let the record show that we are in receipt of application 25-287, Sunday River Skiway Corporation Cascade Booster Pump House Site Plan Review. Cover it all?
Sounds good.
Okay. And have you already given us the, the check?
I have the check and I have another document that Joel asked for, so I can give that to you tonight.
Okay.
Next one.
Why don't you give that to us and enter it into the record, please?
So I got a check for the application fee, and then Joel asked for an updated letter of authorization since one of them is some years old.
Oh, yeah. I think for some reason mine was already, the copy that was already in my package.
Okay, I emailed that, so maybe I just need to work on it.
Sure.
Thanks, sir.
Let the record show that the, that Sunday River Skiway Corporation submitted a check dated May 2nd, 2025, check number 97174, with the amount of $640.39. And that is the application fee for 25-287. And-
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Peter. And he also submitted a new letter of giving Peter Roberts. You didn't kill two birds with one stone in this. You should have put your sidekick on here.
I know. He's got, he has a more recent one.
Yeah, he does have a more recent one. He, he looks a little younger, too.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. Okay. At the last meeting, we gave conditional approval to 4J Development LLC, Monkey Brook Road Subdivision, application number 25-285. Have we gotten any final plans or anything from that?
Got final plans with me tonight, and then the two clean copies requested by the board.
Okay. And the conclusion, the findings of fact and conclusions of the law will be next meeting?
Have the law those-
Yep.
Everything signed and-
Why don't you bring up and put those out? We'll take care of that. Down there.
Down the block. Eleven conditional approval.
Thank you.
Did you take it all today?
I just be one.
My disposable escalator.
Yeah.
I think it must be.
You just bought it!
And I know, I'm getting it ready, but also saying, taking the chair drop and-
And are there, yeah, 11 by 17s of help if they're signing right here?
Yeah.
Well. I think stuff has it's in pristine condition, because I haven't worn it on the fix. Get on it, man.
This friend of mine, Wayne Oliver, said he was a professor. He's got, he's got the T-shirt. He's got the little H1.
That's it?
That's it? I need a second.
Is it the second plan, Bruce?
I signed two pieces of paper.
Right, two pieces of paper.
Well.
Yep, I signed the second one, then signed the first.
Right. The bottom and the second here.
Yeah, we're good.
Excellent. Is this ours?
Yeah, that's yours, yep.
Okay. So that puts 4J LLC to rest. Turn on now to Timberline TH. Quick review. We received the application from Timberline on March 5th of 2025. It was assigned application number 25286. On April 2nd of 2025, the planning board found the application to be complete. And the applicant was informed that no major changes to the application will be allowed from that point forward. Today, at 30 minutes ago, we had, well, an hour and a half ago, we had a site walk. We had the site walk that convened at 5 o'clock and adjourned at 5:40. And we had a public hearing that convened at 6 o'clock that lasted for 15 minutes. And we have, the planning board has until June 4th to, which is the 30-day period for approving, approving with condition or denying application 25286, unless both parties, the applicant and the board mutually agree to extend the review period. At the April 2nd meeting, the applicant stated that an irrevocable letter of credit would be used for the performance guarantee. And at that point, the board reminded the applicant of the documents required to support the financial performance guarantee. And the board also recognized that the financial institution that would be providing the financial, the letter of credit would not issue that letter of credit until after the plan was approved. And therefore, we would have to have a condition of approval required concerning the performance report, the performance guarantee. And again, just a reminder, it takes a while to get the performance guarantee through the town office. So don't come five days before expecting it to get approved by the, by the select board. We'd like to review correspondence, the site walk, and the public hearing. Are there any comments, Gooch, that you would like to have about make, or any takeaways from the site walk?
Enough law. Open ground until it gets re- redged again.
Okay. Bruce?
Yeah, the same as just that, you know, I guess my envision, and looking at it and, and then now understanding the layout, how it's going to get set up, like Gooch says, and then, you know, my question is about this runoff and stormwater and all that.
Bruce, prior to your late arrival at the site walk, Gooch and I walked the distances from Timber, from the intersection of Skiway and Timberline to the first driveway entrance and determined that it was approximately 160, 170 feet. We then walked the distance from the first driveway to the second driveway, the westernmost one, the one that currently services the old real estate building, and determined that that was-
The feet? Oh, sorry, which one?
Yeah, the, the, between the two driveway, two accessways. Yeah, the, the, between the two driveway, two accessways that you have off of Skiway. The existing one that goes to the real estate office and the one off of the, the new one that you have between Timberline and the existing accessway. And that was, I believe, was somewhere 100 and 100, 100 feet or thereabouts.
It was 210, I think, on that one.
Yeah, 210. It was less than 300 feet.
Yes.
And then finally, the distance from the western proposed accessway, which is the existing accessway to the real estate office, to the entrance to the accessway to parking lot 3.
Up the driveway?
Up the, up the, up the accessway into the parking lot was around 80 feet, also less than 300 feet. We also discussed the intersection of Skiway, South Ridge Road, and the accessway to parking lot 3. And we looked at that, and as you can, if you can visualize it, South Ridge Road coming in, which is a one-way into Skiway, comes in at a very acute angle. And the accessway off of Skiway up to parking lot 3, which is technically a one-way access road to the parking lot, is not, why not as, as cute as South Ridge into Skiway? It's not perpendicular road either. And, uh, that intersection is, would be existing, non-conforming by today's standards for an intersection. So we discussed that prior to your, to your arrival, so I just wanted to bring you up to date today.
Thank you.
All right, and so any questions? Any other questions on the site walk? Or points that you want to point out that you saw? How about the public hearing? We heard from Mr. Little that there is a concern about the ability of water, potable water from the wells. However, Mr. Little did not provide any evidence to substantiate that. And all we have is the geologist's report that the applicant submitted, which was basically an inventory of the surrounding wells and their rated output. I don't know when those were given.
Um, I guess my question is, is there, um, plan or thoughts of having a cistern for the water supply for this project?
No, no, there, I believe that the, and Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, that you're gonna have on-demand pressure?
Yes.
With no, with no cistern? And the existing, the two cisterns that are currently on the lot are gonna go away.
They're going away, like all variable speed pumps?
Yeah, whatever, whatever they use. It's, it's the common system today, as opposed to the old jet pump and lighter pump. Okay. All right, so, and let the record show that there was no credible evidence submitted during the public hearing. At this point, Rick, you submitted a rebuttal to Gore Palmer's engineering memo dated April 28th. Would you please give us a oral summary of what you had to say there?
Sure.
Thank you again. And just before you go, that, uh, in case it missed you, Gore Palmer, and I think it was the third review that they did, right? Third engineering memo, I think, if I own this project, second or third? It's submitted a, Gore Palmer, our consultant, submitted an engineering review, well, dated April 28th. And, uh, the applicant had submitted a rebuttal to that, which he is gonna discuss about right now.
Sure. Uh, so, again, for the record, Rick, I'm a mainland development consultant representing TH LLC. Timberline TH LLC, sorry. Uh, the, the updated and addressed items are essentially, we added E911 addressing, with coordination with UL. We tweaked some landscaping, uh, we think to be in, in better conformance with the buffering standards. Fire department expressed concerns about student access and internal circulation. We provided turning, moving exhibits, uh, as well as some explanation on how traffic congestion and confusion should be lessened.
You had that plan in this part large, do you have that?
I do have it with me on the...
Well, you just put it up on the board so that we can look at it. I'm not sure if...
Very interested.
I'm not sure if, 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 uh, the other board members have it fresh in their mind or not.
There's that, and then a second one there.
You got, is that the one with the colors on it?
Yes.
That must be color black. Why don't you, why don't you walk around and take a look at it, please?
While we do that, should I continue to...
Yes, me.
We provided a phase construction estimate as requested by the board, as well as updates to the phasing plan that tabulate, uh, a phase infrastructure, or infrastructure that's planned for each phase. Uh, we did address the Gore Palmer comments, which consisted of some slope adjustments, minor tweaks to pavement for warmer journey movements, uh, spa creates added clarity, addition of a sewer manhole, and a note indicating that the developer will approve the parking lot 3 access and drainage. And, uh, there has since been a short follow-up document from Gore Palmer dated April 30th, so two days following their first, their first review comments, and that would be their second one. Those had a couple of, uh, stormwater comments, which were easily addressed and have been done now, though the board, uh, didn't have, there wasn't time to get the responses back before the supplemental deadline.
If I recall, that was because the, the HydroCAD data was not forwarded to Gore Palmer in a timely fashion, and that's why he came back with the second one.
Yeah, with the original.
And you didn't have any issues with that other, I think you incorporated all of their suggestions.
Yeah, yeah, pretty small and, and easy to take care of, so that's, that's all right.
There are two, two things on the latest set of drawings that you do. On, uh, one of them, if you would explain the, the, the draft C2.1, or no, the draft condominium. Do you have that one available?
Were you gonna talk about this one too, or?
Uh, we'll get to that. I just want you to be familiar with that.
Yeah, that's all that I'm used to.
Okay. John, did, did you see this in your package, or have you? This is the condominium plan. What I want to point out there is, uh, well, Ricky, would you, just with your finger, draw out the separation between phase 1 and phase 2?
Probably most easily done by, I'm gonna go back to the phasing plan, just so I don't get it wrong.
So phase 1 is building 1 and 2, and the required infrastructure surrounding that, plus all stormwater required, okay. Now, if you go back to your condominium plan. Building 2 on this plan, well, building 1 of this plan is designated, must be built, correct?
Yes.
Building 2, which is part of phase 1 in this plan, is labeled, need not be built.
Yeah, that's, uh...
Are, are you not, have you not changed this development now to a three phases?
We, we have not. No, the, the intent of this is to build all three buildings. The, the, the must be built versus need not be built is a turning language for, uh, for provisions if for some reason, uh, this, this stops. And, uh, obviously, it's the, the intent of the developer to come through and...
They, all developers have the intent of always completing their projects. I have not met one that hasn't. Am I, can you correct me on that? However, um, phase 2, besides the buildings, also has required infrastructure associated with that. Does it not?
That question, yeah.
Yes. However, if, if now, if building 2 is not, is not built, that kind of leaves in limbo the required infrastructure for phase 1 that would, would otherwise have supported building 2. And what's the status of that?
I think we can, I think we can quiz the condo attorney on, uh, the need for that language.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not concerned about the, the attorney.
Yeah.
What I'm concerned about is what required improvements will have to be built. Because I, the intent of, of this is that you don't stop in the middle of a phase and leave a phase half-finished.
Agreed.
That's why we have a performance guarantee.
Yeah.
I have issues with making building 2, which is part of phase 1, an optional building, but not having no indication of what effect that has on the other required improvements of the project. And so what I'm hearing is that, that the developer could decide to stop development with building 1, and now we're in limbo as to the required improvements for phase 1 that need to be completed.
That would be in violation of the phasing plan and, and the start and stop construction plan that's presented, so...
Right, but you're not gonna put in a, a parking area that supports a building that's not built, are you?
I, Mr. Baker, I, I'm not sure where, where we're going. I don't know how to respond to these.
My, 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 my point is, is that I, I see by this latest, this late stage in the game, designating a building that it was previously part of phase 1 as need not be built, which in my book would then make it part of a, of a future phase. And, and this is a change to, to the phasing plan, which, which was not brought to the board.
So my, my suggestion is that the, the attorney and the language that he's requesting on the condominium plan, uh, that we, we need to speak with that attorney and make sure that we can, we can get rid of that language.
And my comment is, is that you have changed the, you've changed the phasing plan without coming to the board.
The, the phasing, the phasing plan is not intended to be changed.
You, then the, having a building optional in a phasing plan, to me, is not...
So I apologize, I'm not being clear. Uh, the intent is to go back to the attorney and get rid of any language that says, uh, need not be built for the...
All right, so I, I voiced that concern. My other concern is, is would you please read the comment that you had for the accessway to parking lot 3 on plan C2.1?
As part of phase 2, Timberline TH LLC will approve existing access to conform with local standards to the satisfaction of the code enforcement officer.
Since when does the code enforcement officer approve the design of neighborhood roads?
Uh, my understanding is that the code enforcement officer is going to sign up on all of the...
That's, does the code enforcement officer have the responsibility to approve a road design for a subdivision? No, it does not.
Okay.
It does not. So that was another late addition where, uh, the applicant added to, uh, plan C2.1, which I think is dated April 28th, maybe, maybe the 23rd, that was not on previous plans concerning the accessway to parking lot 3. Gentlemen, if you can ponder that, ask any questions, while I move on here through my next sheet.
So does this mean, from the last plan, this, this, this plan here has been revised since then?
Yes. This plan was revised since our last meeting.
And which it was not supposed to have been.
Which it should not have been, at least not without our...
So I guess the question is, if that access is to be brought up to the standards of the neighborhood road, shouldn't it be on this set plan?
Yes. And, um, let me further, uh, the U D R O defines a driveway as an accessway that services two dwellings or less. An accessway that services three dwellings or more by default gets bumped up to the next classification of a road, which is a neighborhood road.
And because of the occupancy of those buildings, that...
Their building 3 is four dwelling units. And in fact, in fact, every accessway on this subdivision needs to be a neighborhood road.
Does.
I will add that, uh, it's not the applicant's intent, certainly, to sneak something in on board. We did revise most of the plan set based on the comments from Gore Palmer, Palmer, plus the, uh, the feedback we got from the board on, at the previous meeting. And so that's, that's the rationale for the...
Mr. Dunn, we are, the board's now going to go into deliberations. And so unless we ask you a question, please refrain from making comments.
Okay.
Okay. So we are gonna go and start deliberations as to whether this, that this application meets, meets with conditions or does not meet. Normally, we go through the 21 criteria of approval. However, uh, I would like to, by the sake of brevity, divert, uh, change our method, methodology a little bit, and ask members of the board if they have any items which are not in accordance with the ordinances or criteria of approval that they would like to bring up. Gooch?
All right, hang on here a second.
Bruce? Here's your opportunity to follow up on your concern about...
You know, the, the whole thing about the access and the turnarounds and things for the fire trucks and all, I can see this... is people taking whatever parking space that they can take. And where the where the policing of these spaces, that hammerhead at the end on building one, um, you know, a a truck comes in there and just got two cars in there, you know, they're screwed. Um, you know, how how is this going to be, this this emergency access and exit, egress and ingress egress, um, gonna be cared for so that in the event, I mean, like I say, you know, who knows what percentage is going to be, but in that event, you know.
Okay, so you're you're specifically talking in about section fourteen B six of the U D R O.
Okay.
Are you not concerning dead end roads and cul-de-sacs?
Yes.
You know, and I know that Alan has talked about.
We, while you're while you're digging it up, we do have a letter from the fire department that voices concern about turnarounds in the.
Letter I couldn't find.
In. And it states, it's dated April seventh, twenty twenty five. The subject is Timberline TH subdivision and site plan twenty five, two eighty six, eight Timberline Road, tax map U zero three dash zero zero one dash A, Dear Newry Planning Board, regarding the Timberline TH LLC subdivision and site plan, tax map U zero three zero one dash A on Skeway Road, the many entrances into the property and the congested traffic that already exists at these multiple intersections, as well as the small parking areas for the building is a concern for the Newry Fire Department. Section fourteen six A requires a built, a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead turnaround for roads that dead end. The parking areas could be connected to, so drive-through access is available for fire tracks, fire trucks and first responders for both the upper and lower accesses. Next paragraph, the access off of Timberline Road and the entrance to parking lot three, building one of the subdivision will require street names and must comply with the Newry address ordinance. So therefore, these accessways will become roads. Making the parking lot three accessway a two-way road. Okay, so they're talking about the accessway up to Sunday River Parking Lot Three. Making the parking lot three access to a two-way road will also add to more confusion to the four hundred foot plus or minus section of Skeway Road that already has traffic moving to and from five different roads or access points. And as many as forty plus vehicles backing out of the parking lots at Skeway Road shoulder plus all the pedestrians coming and going from Southridge. The Newry Fire Department asks for these standards to be thoroughly considered public and the public safety to be foremost in everybody's review.
But I couldn't, the letter I couldn't find.
That's the letter you're looking for.
Yeah.
Okay, so the U D R O requires roads at dead end and cul-de-sacs or a hammerhead, that uh or hammer, to have a cul-de-sac or hammer turnaround, hammerhead turnaround. The cul-de-sac must be eighty six.
Feet property line radii and seventy foot outer edge of the travel way of radii is drawn in exhibit A to the ordinance.
And the hammerhead?
The hammerhead turnaround must have a max minimum travel right of way as drawn in exhibit B one or B two in the ordinance, to the ordinance.
Okay. Uh, John, thoughts?
I agree with that.
Okay. Okay.
And I see that was a big burden upon the fire department.
Mm-hmm. I will make a motion. Given the findings of fact that U D R O section fourteen B six, a road is to be dead end, then the cul-de-sac or a hammerhead turnaround must be built at the end of the dead end. The cul-de-sac must have an eighty six foot property line radii and a seventy foot outer edge of travel way radii as drawn in exhibit A to the ordinance. The hammerhead turnaround must have a minimum travel way and right of way as drawn in exhibit B one or B two of the ordinance. Finding the fact number two, the Newry Fire Department in a letter to the finding board dated April seventh, twenty twenty five, brings attention to the accessways in the proposed development, do not meet the dimensions required of the cul-de-sac or hammerhead turnaround as specified in exhibit A and B of the U D R O twenty five. The conclusion of law is that application twenty five, two eighty six is not in conformity with the local ordinance and plans, specifically U D R O fourteen B six and section twenty five exhibits A and B. And I therefore make my motion that the application is not in conformity.
I'll second that motion.
Comments, discussion? Gooch? Nope. This is deliberation of the board.
No, I'm still there with Bruce.
Okay. A motion and a proper second has been made. Finding that the application is not in compliance with U D R O section fourteen B six and section twenty five exhibits A and B. Hearing no further discussion, I will take a vote.
One.
Two.
Three. Let the record show that the board finds that the application is not in compliance with local ordinances and plans, specifically U D R O fourteen B six and section twenty five exhibit A and B. I would now like to move on to U D R O Performance Standard thirteen X three A, if the board will please look that up.
X three A?
Yep, thirteen X. Thirteen X three A.
Okay, where are you?
Oh, I see, nevermind.
Fourteen.
Thirteen, thirteen X.
Oh, okay.
Find it.
In. Eight. Oh, there we go, fourteen.
Thirteen X three A.
Two A three access control.
Thirteen six three A requires a lot which has frontage on two or more roads. The access to the lot shall be provided to the lot across the frontage and to the road where there is lesser potential for traffic congestion and for hazards to traffic and pedestrian. So the applicant's lot, tax lot number U zero three dash zero zero one dash A, has frontage on both Skeway Road and Timberline Road. Skeway Road is a primary road that services several commercial entities and well over two hundred residential and or dwelling units above it. Timberline Road is a secondary road and services approximately forty five lots and or dwelling units. That makes Timberline the lesser of the two roads, at least in my in my books. And my interpretation of this is that there should only be one access point, accessway into the lot, and that would should be the accessway off of Timberline.
The entire lot.
The entire lot. And that the the proposed accessways off of Skeway and off of the accessway to parking lot three are not in accordance with the ordinance.
I agree.
Discussions?
I understand.
Okay, you are, you want to make any comments about that, or I know you said you understand.
Well, okay, so 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 that that would mean there would, that would be the in and out of the entire project.
Correct.
So they couldn't go on to the uh right-of-way road to the parking lots.
That is true. That is correct. Okay. According to U D R O. This is my interpretation and I'm sticking forward.
I think that's a correct interpretation.
More thoughts, Bruce?
Um, and is there anything because of grandfathered existing access?
Good, good question. This is a new application. The, there is no requirement that a planning board rely on past presidents of of this or any other lot. That doesn't exist here.
Okay, this is a new application.
This is a new application and uh what we have done in the past is not a concern to the finding board. We are taking the ordinance.
Yeah.
That's before us and reviewing it, reviewing the application that we have to that ordinance.
And and I I do remember from past.
Now, had had the original plan, if they were able to fit into the density requirements and they had kept the existing retail space there and we're going to use it as a retail space, that was an approved site plan and therefore that accessway off of Skeway to the real estate office would would be grandfathered in. However, that because of density requirements, the applicant had decided to do away with that retail entity and or structure.
Do we have another?
And we are definitely at, basically at a version subdivision. And therefore, there is nothing grandfathered in.
I I I don't want to stick my foot in my mouth, so I'm I I mean, I guess I want to ask like in a hypothetical. Um, in the event, and I remember going back to this, so they had they had decided to either keep that building and build only maybe two buildings um for density requirements. Um, or maybe I'm wrong, uh, but that that, but in order to 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 maximize the density of the three buildings, they would need to um extinguish that building that exists in that, on that property. So, um,
if you take the square footage of the lot.
Right.
Subtract the encumbered portion of the lot, which is the easement that has been given to Sunday River for the portion of Skeway Road that goes over the lot as well as access, the accessway up to lot three. That cannot be, that square footage of tho, of that road or those two roads.
Right.
Cannot be applied towards the density calculation for maximum number of units that can be built on that lot.
So that might basically shrink that lot?
So it basically shrinks that lot and because they're proposing multi-unit housing and they are in the resort development zone and they are sewered, the density per dwelling unit for a multi-unit family is ten thousand square feet. So if you take, if you take the lot square footage, subtract the encumbered portion, divide that by ten thousand, you come up with eleven point five. You round down to eleven and thus we have eleven units being proposed on the lot.
But that entrance goes away because that building went away.
That, yes. The existing, the existing entrance way to what would have been the real estate office is, does not factor into this because it's.
Because it's a new application.
It's a brand new application for a subdivision and there is no, the same thing with the existing parking lot.
Yeah.
That is there, um, also doesn't factor in, it's not grandfathered in.
Well.
John, any other discussions?
I've never seen a lot that had as many encumbrances on it as this one has.
Bruce, any other questions or comments?
No, I think I'm okay right now.
Okay. I will make a motion with the following findings of fact. First, U D R O section thirteen X three A requires a lot which has frontage on two or more roads. The access to the lot shall be provided to the lot across the frontage and to the road where there is lesser potential for traffic congestion and for hazards to traffic and pedestrians.
Well, alright. Lost my spot. Would you like a second on that?
Uh, no, I haven't, I haven't finished it.
Oh, okay.
I haven't finished it.
That's why I asked.
Finding the fact number two, Newry tax lot U zero three dash zero zero one dash A has frontage on Skeway Road and Timberland Road. Skeway Road is a primary road that services several commercial entities and over two hundred residential lots and or dwelling units. Timberland Road is a neighborhood road that services forty five lots and or dwelling units. Timberland Road is a lesser potential for traffic. Let me rephrase that. Timberland Road has a lesser potential for traffic congestion and hazards to traffic. Finding the fact number three, the Newry Fire Department in a letter to the finding board dated April seventh, two thousand twenty five, brings attention to the congested traffic and the heavy pedestrian use on Skeway Road west of Timberland Road. Finding the fact number four, the multiple accessways proposed by the applicant do not meet the performance standard set out in U D R O section thirteen X three A. The conclusion of law is application twenty five, two eighty six is not in conformity with local ordinances and plans and specifically U D R O section thirteen X. That is my motion.
I'll second that.
The motion with a proper second has been made, finding that application twenty five, two eighty six is not in conformity with local ordinances and plans, specifically U D R O section thirteen X. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will take a vote.
One. Two.
Three. Let the record show that the vote was unanimous. Three. Let the record show that the vote was unanimous. Next, I'd like to bring up road design standards, U D R O Section 14 B 4. Section B 4, if you go down the table, you'll see that it has a, for neighborhood roads and primary roads, it has minimum distance between intersections for roads on the same side. If we assume that Skiway Road is a neighborhood road, which it is not, it's a primary road, then we'll take the most lenient of the three. The minimum distance between intersections for, on the same side of the road is 300 feet. You with us there, Bruce?
I am, I'm right there.
The application has two access ways proposed off of Skiway Road. The easternmost access way is approximately 160 feet from Timberland Road. The distance between the eastern proposed access way and the western proposed access way is approximately 120 feet, or 100, oh, 200 feet, excuse me. And the distance from the western access way, which is the old access way to the real estate office, to the access way to Parking Lot 3 is 80 feet. So the point I'm making is that those access ways do not, which are secondary roads, by the way, are not second, they're neighborhood roads because they service more than two dwelling units apiece, do not meet the road design standards of chap, of Section 14 of the U D R O. Discussion?
The road on the eastern side that intersects.
Timberland.
Timberland.
Right.
Timberline Road. Says here, because it's a neighborhood road.
Actually, yes, I believe it's a secondary road.
Secondary road, okay.
Timberline is secondary.
Yeah.
Maximum grade within 75 feet of the road is 4%. And I'm not sure that we have that at this point.
That's in addition to the point that I just made about distance from intersections.
Yep.
That's a good catch. Bruce?
I will, yeah, I agree with you.
Any other questions? Are you in agreement or disagreement?
No, I'm, I'm in agreement with what you said, a good catch, a good catch.
Okay. No more?
Nope.
Let me make a motion. Following finding a fact, number one. The U D R O defines a driveway as a vehicular access way serving two or less lots and/or dwelling units, and reference U D R O Section 24. The four proposed access ways to the subdivision service three or more lots each, actually should be three or more units each, and therefore do not meet the disdefinition of a driveway. The four proposed access ways must be reviewed as and meet the standards of a neighborhood road. Finding a fact number two, the road design standards for a neighborhood road, U D R O Section 14 B 4, require a minimum horizontal distance between road intersections on the same side to be 300 feet. The two access ways off of Skiway Road proposed by the project are only 170 feet apart approximately from each other. The easternmost access way is only 160 feet approximately from the intersection of Skiway Road and Timberline Road, which is also on the same side as the access way. The westernmost access way is only 50 feet approximately from the access way to Parking Lot 3, which is on the same side of the road. The conclusion of law is that Application 25-286 is not in conformity with local ordinances and plans, specifically, U D R O Section 14 B 4. That is the motion. And a second.
I'll second that.
The motion with a proper second has been made, finding that Application 25-286 is not in conformity with the local ordinances and plans, specifically, U D R O 14 B 4. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote.
One, two.
Three. Let the record show that the vote was unanimous. And finally, I'd like to come up to Section 14 B 7 D and E.
E and E?
B, 14 B 7 D and 14 B 7 E.
7 E. What was that, E? E and one?
D and E. Okay, so what I'd like to come, bring to the board's attention right now is, I think we've already discussed, Skiway Road is a primary road. It services several commercial entities. Let me rephrase that. Skiway Road west of Timberland is a primary road in that it services multiple commercial establishments and well over 200-plus residential and/or dwelling units. I'd also like to point out that the intersection of Skiway Road, Southridge Road, and the access to Parking Lot 3 do not meet current intersection standards as outlined in U D R O 14 B, road design standards, specifically, 14 D 7 D and 14 D 7 E. The current configuration of this intersection, with Skiway Road being a two-way traffic, Southridge Road being one-way east onto Skiway, and the access to Parking Lot 3 being one-way north off of Skiway into the Parking Lot, as it exists right now, is an existing non-conforming situation. That, that intersection was there before the U D R O was even a glimmer in, I don't know, whose eyes. And has basically stayed the same.
For forty years.
Over, over, over the time. Making the access way to Parking Lot 3 into a two-way secondary road, or even a neighborhood road, would now add an additional entrance way, turnout, onto Skiway at an intersection that is non-conforming and would aggravate.
This would leave a huge mess.
Yep. And not, even, we're not even talking about that, that second, third road to it.
And so, the point I'm making is, converting the access way to Parking Lot 3 to a two-lane road deteriorates the existing non-conforming condition on the intersection of Skiway Road, Southridge Road, and, or, yeah, Southridge Road, and the access to Parking Lot 3.
Yeah.
Discussions? And I hear agreement. How's your chance to disagree or?
No, 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 I totally agree.
Yeah, an old country boy like me would sit there until mud season before he did his turn.
All right. I make a motion, and the following finding's a fact. Skiway Road, west of the intersection of Timberland Road, services multiple commercial entities, as well as over 200 residential lots and/or units. Using the guidelines outlined in U D R O Section 24, this section of Skiway Road meets the primary road classification. Finding a fact number two. The three-way intersection comprising of Skiway Road, Southridge Road, and the access way to Parking Lot 3 do not meet current intersect, intersection standards as outlined in U D R O Section 14 B, road design standards, in particular, 14 B 7 D and 14 B 7 E. Finding a fact number three. The three-way intersection comprising of Skiway Road, Southridge Road, and the access way to Parking Lot 3, which with the current traffic configuration listed below, is best described as existing non-conforming situation. The current traffic flow configuration is, A, Skiway Road, two-way traffic; B, Southridge Road, one-way traffic heading east to the stop sign; and C, the access way to Parking Lot 3, one-way traffic heading north and entering into Parking Lot 3. Finding a fact number four. Converting the access way to Parking Lot 3 to a two-lane road, as proposed by the applicant, will deteriorate the current existing non-conforming condition of the three-way intersection of Skiway Road, Southridge Road, and the access way to Parking Lot 3 by introducing vehicles exiting Lot 3 via the access way and entering the intersection. The conclusion of law is that Application 25-286 is not in conformity with local ordinances and plans, specifically, U D R O Section 14 B 7, and that is my motion. So may I have a second?
I'll second that.
The motion with a proper second. Finding Application 25-286 is not in conformity with local ordinances and plans, specifically, U D R O 14 B 7 has been made. Any discussion? I will, you'll take a vote.
One, two.
Three. Let the record show that the motion passed unanimously. All right. I'll make one final motion. Given the above-stated findings of facts and conclusions of law, the Newry Planning Board denies the application of Timberline TH LLC to build a major residential subdivision on Newry Tax Map U 03-001-A. I will take a second.
I'll second that.
The motion with a proper second has been made, stating that given the above-stated findings of fact, the conclusions of law, the Newry Planning Board denies the application of Timberline TH LLC to build a major residential subdivision on Newry Tax Map U 03-001-A. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will take a vote.
One, two.
Three. Let the record show that the planning board has denied Application 25-286 to Timberline TH LLC. Mr. Dutton, you have 30 days to file an appeal. As, and that is outlined in the U D R O, as well as the town ordinance for the Board of Appeals. Thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you, folks, for your time and effort. We need to go to the site tonight.
Okay. We'll move on to, you need to take a break?
I don't think so.
As you look at your bladder and say, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Could have had poor Peter say.
Yeah, I guess you could have.
You know, you can donate that tripod to the town of Newry.
No, he, he, he travels around with them. Okay. At the next meeting, we have the site plan review for the Sunday River Cascade Booster Pump House. We received that today, so our 30-day clock for finding it.
Has started.
It started. And the application is been, was distributed.
Can I just mention that we're working on finding the facts for this, and they should be ready.
Okay. We have a two for the next one?
Sounds like it.
Okay. And we also received a I have not looked at it, because it was delivered today, but it will, I have to. The Lock Mountain Estates subdivision, they're on the Newry-Bethel Town Line.
Oh, yeah.
For that one.
Right. They are requesting a pre-application conference, which I don't understand because.
Are we in open discussion? What are we doing right now?
We're just handing this out, putting this, we're in open discussion right now, talking about business for next meeting.
Didn't we do that already?
As I said, I have not looked at this. This will be on the agenda for next, next meeting. You want to? You want, all right, let me give you the official one.
Oh, the answer received one.
Okay, this will be 25-287.
I thought that was bump up.
Uh, 28, this will, no, this has, this already has a number. It has a number leading back to 07 or something like that. So don't worry about the number on that one. Okay. So, in the next meeting, we'll be having those, those two issues to talk about. Any other new business that, anybody wants to discuss?
I came out of a driveway in front of the real estate building today, and after looking over 13, I realized that driveway is more than 4% grade.
The, oh, okay, the, off of Timberline?
No, off of Ski Ray Road.
Ski Way Road to the, to the office? Again, that, that, we don't have the applicant here, even though we've...
Yeah, that's true. I'd forgotten about that.
We, we should not be discussing that. Any other? Would either of you two like to take the lead on the pump house for next meeting?
No, because I'm, I'm, I'm not going to be here. I'm, I'm here for one meeting, and then I'm going.
Okay, so you're, that's right, you're going to be here for the, you're going to be here, you're going to make the next meeting, but you'll be gone for the first, one, maybe two in June?
Yes.
And you're going to be down under.
Yeah, it sounds like I can do it.
Okay, so if you wouldn't mind going, you know, walking us through the, the jurisdiction, applicability.
Yeah, I need a check-off sheet.
I'm sure Becky can get you one.
I have, I have a dozen of them. I've printed up, I can get them.
Here's the newest.
The newest and greatest dated April first.
So, so you're not at the next board meeting?
No, I'm, I'm, the next one, I'm leaving.
One in January?
Right, I mean, June, right.
Yeah.
Where are you headed?
I'm going fishing for six days, and I'm coming home, packing up my bag, and then I'm heading to Australia. Oh, yeah, I'm going to go visit Hannah.
You're on to live some cool months.
And I, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, I'll be gone, I mean, the whole thing will be gone, but it'll be gone three weeks anyways, two weeks in Australia.
So the check-off sheet, which is, check off?
Mr. Lill.
Yeah.
May first.
The subject of groundwater
Very old.
Is a difficult subject.
I believe it would be.
Has been on that forty-nine, I haven't got coffee at home, so.
And...
So one U D R O, one short one.
It's difficult to ascertain the capacity of the aquifer, even though the board is required to review adequacy, adequacy of water for a subdivision. It is an issue in, in there. We do, I know I'm, I'm on the comprehensive plan committee that has yet to meet because we were waiting for town meeting to come and go. That should definitely be a topic of discussion, given the, the density of wells in the resort development district.
Yeah, I know Sunday Rivers had problems with some of their...
Oh, true.
They, yeah, I don't have specifics, and I would, I would not be in a position to talk about it.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, you have, you've seen the water truck in front of Brookside during vacation weeks and whatnot.
No, I was, I was talking with Mr. Peter.
Yeah, Peter Robinson.
And he said that that was, wasn't the Brookside. I thought that was the water at the Brookside.
Well, for the system, it was right there.
Yeah.
It probably services Brookside as well as other, other, other users on that part of the, of the system.
Right. You know, and the thing is, every time somebody drills a well, it's, you know, it's only so much water.
Yeah, I mean, totally that analogy of somebody's straw's in the cup.
Yeah, that's what...
So, so I, I understand where you're coming from. It's a tough, it's a tough, it's a tough one, it's a tough one to, to, to handle. One thing that would be something to discuss at, at, maybe at town meeting or something would be a comprehensive study done by a geologist of that whole region just to, to come up with a baseline or something like that.
Well, I wasn't, you know, I didn't think that, I had any, you know, I wasn't farthest in my chances. I just wanted to, I was sort of hoping that they would continue with the system. But maybe, maybe now they told me one driveway, they will run the driveway right around.
All right, any other? Thank you for your attendance, we appreciate you.
It's fascinating. I mean, I just think that I'd stay.
Pass, pass the word, pass the word around, telling this is the exciting place to be. On Wednesdays, the first Wednesday, and the third Wednesday of the month.
Right, or you can just tune into...
Or you can, if you can watch the rerun on...
You know, I, you know, I, I'm honored about, you know, comments on this.
Other comments or questions or what have you? Joelle will be back, Joelle will not be at the next meeting either. So we are without a CEO. She will be in town next week for three days, and then gone. So we will not have her assistance for the next meeting as well.
I will work pretty hard to do my homework. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lill.
Bye, Charlie.
Bye-bye. Roughly thirty years ago, main adaptive, main handicap skiing, whatever, drilled a well.
That's not yours.
Oh.
Thank you.
You don't have the whole table.
You're not taking it all.
Thank you, Brooks.
We need it. So it comes into the main adaptive, main handicap building, and there's two water meters. And one is for the building, and the other one's for the ski area. And the building uses fifty thousand gallons of water a year. And the ski area uses four hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water a year out of this one well.
That's a lot of...
Yep.
In not having numbers, meter readings for other wells, it's hard to say if that's a lot average or...
That's a lot of water.
Five hundred thousand gallons sounds like a lot of water.
But it is a lot of water, but, but how does it stand up with their other wells? Because they have numerous wells that feed into their sister and system.
Yep.
So...
But this one feeds one up the hill, and I'm not sure what it goes.
I mean, to me, it's just the, the amazing, you know, for the hydrology of the geology of the aquifer system that's somewhere below our feet. You know, the amount of water that's somewhere down there in whatever form of lakes and oceans and rivers and streams.
But, but, but at the same time, if you look at, and you can go up onto the main government, the main gov website, and you can bring up a map of registered wells, there are a lot more wells than are registered. And, and you will have a well that produces fifty gallons a minute, and within fifty feet of it, there's a well that's dry.
Yeah.
You know, so it's...
Well, Jerome, Brad Jerome, when they, when they built the house up on Bear River, and they, they had a well, and it went dry, and so they drilled another well, and I think it was like six hundred feet, and that went dry, and then they had to get down to like nine hundred to get water. And yet, like at the fire station over on Sunday River Road, the house next door has got a well that just, you know, it, it's, I don't know, it's like this, this cavity of water that's just under pressure.
Oh, it's a, it's a Artesian.
Yeah, I mean, they, they just, you know, spout them in water.
Right, well, the, the six hundred isn't like an Artesian well?
Which one?
That he was just off the...
It's about, it's about what, where your water, what your water pocket is.
I know, but any, isn't that...
An Artesian well is where there, where there's enough, there's enough pressure that it forces the water up and out, out the wellhead.
Right, I was saying, because...
At least that's my understanding of it.
Oh, I, I thought Artesian was just any drilled well, but...
It, it depends upon the water pocket. That would might, that depends upon the water jacket.
That makes sense, because my house has a Artesian well. It's three hundred and plus feet.
And I guess that's...
Constant flow. It just, I have it drained into an area that goes in the pipe under the road and goes out by my mailbox. It's extreme.
Broke the start of what was Bill Williams's trailer, and it drains off in fifty gallons a minute. Now where? North West Bethel.
Oh. Let's move on now to two more items. One is, we got town meeting next Tuesday, so please...
I thought we had that in my book.
See if you can make it. There are...
I'm checking my life right now.
There are several ordinances on the, on up for vote, including the vacation rental ordinance.
What, what item is that?
Tuesday, the thirteenth.
Oh, I won't be here. I got the must-need meeting.
But there's also the driveway, there's a driveway ordinance as well as, uh, Joelle has made some made, some big, adjust, some big edits to the land use building permit ordinance. And there's a very, very...
There's also the short-term.
There's a vacation rental, vacation rental, driveway entrance, land use building permit, and it's actually a U D R O amendment. One, uh, it's a two-liner where they're redefining the, the definition of a, of a road in order to...
What time is that meeting?
Six o'clock.
I'm in, I'll be there.
So, if you can make it, plus all the other, plus all the other thirty-nine, some warrants that we have to go through.
Here in the meeting room?
No, that's at the bear, at the Grange.
It should be over in about a half an hour.
All right, I want to, I want to throw some food for thought out there. Because next, next year, next spring, not twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six marks a two-year from our last major look at the U D R O.
All right.
And going into that, one thing I'd like to throw out is, right now, the parking, Section fifteen, which is entrance ways and parking, stipulates number parking spaces for multi-unit housing. And so, and it says two, two spaces per, per unit. Doesn't matter if that unit's a one-bedroom or five-bedroom. Two spaces. And given, especially in the resort development district, the propensity of properties to be put on the vacation rental market, if you have a five-bedroom unit, it's quite possible that you're going to have five parties renting that unit, and they each come in an individual car. So now you've got five cars, and you only got two spaces that were designed for.
And now, so leading back to your question about the parking spaces for this subdivision. No, no, you, but it, it, it's just a general question, indoor parking, you know?
Okay, but what happens, and this has happened in a, in a lot of, a lot of the residence, residential units, whether it be a single-family or multi-family that have garages, those garages have been converted to a bedroom. So now that parking lot has parking spaces.
Or if I, I want to rent my house, I was an Airbnb, and I, I got a free car garage.
Right.
So, am I only allowed two spaces?
No, because you're, you're not a multi-family dwelling. If you're talking a townhouse-type arrangement, the condominium cooperative, whatever.
You're not limited to two spaces. You can have as many parking spaces as you want. You just have to have at least.
Minimum. So, so if, if somebody comes in and wants to build a townhouse of five units, the U D R O specifies that they only need ten parking spaces. But given today's building standards, those, each one of those townhouses might have four or five bedrooms and be put on a vacation rental market, so that, so that you end up with...
Right, I'm guessing because this was written prior to short-term rentals, so they're seeing a five-bedroom unit as a mom and dad and four kids.
Or, or...
Mom and dad have the cars, the kids don't.
Right, or, or they weren't even thinking, conceiving five-bedroom units, or conceiving two, maybe three-bedroom units.
Right.
And being a family, not, not a short-term rental.
Yeah, because two of those drive in.
So, so, you know, if you look at some of the existing townhouse developments that we have, and you go up there during the weekend in ski season, parking is approached because they have the minimum number of parking spaces for a unit that they can accommodate the use of the unit. So, I was making a long story, bringing it back around. I'd like to think about, have people think about, you know, what edits we might want, want to make to the parking standards for townhouses and multi-unit ones, if it needs to be changed or not.
I'll see that.
So, anyway. Any other new business? John, thank you very much for volunteering to take the lead on the Cascade Pump House.
About forty years ago, Brutey Miller's had his water pumps. They had a three-thousand gallon holding tank system. And it was, it was gone in a day and a half. They said, well, there's X number of houses here, and maybe there's sixty or seventy-five people. So after Christmas, they started knocking on doors at five o'clock in the afternoon. And they found two hundred and fifty people in that subdivision. And that's why the tank was going dry.
Which, which goes back to one of the primary reasons for the vacation rental ordinance, is that you have, you have residential units that were designed for three bedrooms for maybe six or eight people at most, and you have twelve or fourteen people staying there, which overloads the ability of the wastewater system to handle that.
You know, it's interesting though, because you have the old string of comments on Facebook. You know, and you always have people, well, that's just, you know, just like this, you know, this communist country or this dictatorship country where you're telling me what I can and cannot do with my land and blah, 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 blah. It's like, you know, and some of the, some of the comments were actually pretty good in understanding. You know, they talked about, you know, it's, it's, I try to limit you on the amount of units for just about life-saving things, about life-saving environment, you know, and, and taking care of people that are in there, and I don't want you to pollute my, my water. You're going to fill up your, you know, house with thirty-five people and it's going to overtax your system, you know?
All right, um, our next meeting will be on May twenty-first.
Yep.
Be at six o'clock. Board meeting. It's as straightforward as it can be. And therefore, I'll, I'll take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
I ain't there. We get a motion out of Bruce.
Well, I made one other one earlier.
I'll second Bruce's, I'll, I'll second Bruce's motion. Oh, John, none of us will move. Emotions that made to adjourn the meeting, then reconvene on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor?
All right, two.
Three. Brooks, why do you...